If you've been forgiven, if you've been forgiven, if you've been redeemed, sing the song forever to them. And if you've been free, if you've been his name, sing the song forever to them. Yes, we'll sing the song forever. And the angels will rise. Sing it out. Holy, our creation Christ. Holy, you are lifted high. Holy, holy forever. Hear your people sing. Holy, to the King of kings. Holy, you will always be. Jesus, your name is the highest. Your name is the greatest. Your name stands above the law. Yes, it does. All thrones and dominions of power. Your name stands above the law. Jesus, your name is the highest. Your name is the greatest. Your name stands above the law. All thrones and dominions of power. And positions only your name stands above them all. Jesus, your name is the highest. Your name is the greatest. Your name stands above them all. All thrones and dominions of power. And positions only your name stands above them all. And the angels cry. Holy, our creation Christ. Holy, you are lifted high. Hear your people sing. Holy, to the King of kings. Holy, you will always be. Holy, holy forever. One more time, your name. Somebody singing to him. Jesus, your name is the highest. Your name is the greatest. Your name stands above the law. All thrones and dominions of power. And positions only your name stands above them all. Jesus, your name is the highest. Your name is the greatest. Your name stands above them all. One more time, your name, your name, your name, your name. Your name is the highest. Your name is the greatest. Your name stands above them all. One more time, your name, your name, your name, your name. Your name is the highest. Your name is the greatest. Your name stands above them all. All thrones and dominions of power. And positions only your name stands above them all. And the angels cry.
Hello, everyone.
God bless you.
God bless you.
Hello, hello.
How about that for a little praise and worship?
I love it. It's the tone.
Yes. Uh, well, Brother Chris is, um, is, is, um, out tonight, so I was gonna cover for him. So we want to, um, make sure everybody was, um, here before we started anything and go from there. Let's see something, just make sure we're we're good. Okay, I think we're good. All right, how you guys doing tonight?
Fine, how are you?
All right. Pastor, good to hear your voice tonight. The Vans List.
Amen.
I'm sorry?
I said bless you, Vince.
Hey, brother, how you doing?
I'm doing good, sir.
Good to see you. Well, it, it is, um, eight after. But nine after, really. Can we get, um, um, Vans List Mona, can you pray a sin for tonight?
Yes, sir. Father, in the name of Jesus, we just thank you tonight. We thank you for this gathering, Father. We thank you, Lord God, for just touching us today and just leading and guiding us, Father. And Father, as we come before you tonight to study your word, we ask that you would open up our eyes, that we may see, Father, open up our inner ears, that we might hear what the Spirit has to say unto our church. Give us understanding. Let the mind of Christ be in us, Father. And we thank you for our teacher. We ask that you just bless him and anoint him, Father, that he will bring forth the word of God, that the word of God will empower us and take us to another level in our spiritual growth. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
All right.
I'd say.
Amen, amen. Hey, I'm, I'm sorry I missed you guys last week. You know, close to this time of, of work, um, parties and, and those kind of things going on. I was, we weren't fortunate to get on Bible study session last Wednesday, and I tell you, I feel like I'm missing something every time I miss that. So, um, I'm gonna help facilitate that. You guys, I, I know we, we just all plug in together here, so, um, I know we're gonna have a wonderful time tonight. And I, I guess I wanted to ask, um, can anybody share where we left off last week? I know we were gonna start on, uh, verse 11 of chapter 13, uh, tonight, but if you guys can, if someone can share, what took place last week, what you got of last week's session, or, um, if you wanna recap some of that.
Last week, we had an in-person, uh, was the, was the Christmas.
Christian play, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry, my, my schedule's off. Yeah.
Two weeks. And so, yeah, we're, we're starting right back in thirteen.
Okay, cool, cool. Pastor, you wanna give us a precursor, or? Or anyone wanna share what, what proverbs have, you know, led to them, especially during this time?
Well, the thing is, is, uh, I, I'll just do this, so, you know, the Lord put in my spirit to say a couple, maybe a couple sermons ago, is that if you, if you come to church and you, and you listen to the word, you, and you, you, you know, fellowship and Christian fellowship, I said that you're gonna be smarter. You're gonna be smarter in a lot of different ways. And, you know, and then I started studying, I was doing some theological study, and what, that's what I do on the road while I'm in between places, I find these, um, you know, these theologians that, that are sometimes medieval theologians, uh, who are sometimes called saints, and they're called different things, and they have different philosophical backgrounds and those kinds of things, but one of the things I was studying was Thomas, and, uh, Thomas is a medieval theologian, who actually kind of branched from the Dominicans, who were, um, sometimes they were nicknamed God's dogs, because they were so dogmatic about, um, about theology and about learning and, and stuff, and they dispatched themselves all the way through Europe and, uh, and, and, and they were really, uh, you've heard the word apologetics. These people, um, were the folks, you know, they're definitely not making an apology for God, but what they were, they were just really advocates of, um, of, you know, doctrine, you know, that's what their deal with doctrine, so. But what, what Thomas was seeking on is that where, um, philosophy during that time, you know, you had all these philosophies coming through those ages where folks were coming in, this is how you live. So you had like Aristotle, you had these philosophers, and then, you know, you had even writers back in those days who would write, this is how life is. You know, we think about Shakespeare and his tragedies and stuff, and, you know, it has a whole lot of philo- philosophical stuff behind it, right? And so you had these philosophers, but then you had people of God, and there was always a, a battle. But Thomas would say this, is that, um, God created all knowledge. So, the thing is, is that the philosophers have something to say, but they don't have all to say. Right? And so, he's saying that you should study, and, you know, that a lot of people like, well, I don't have to study anything. The Bible says, "That is still thyself approved rightfully dividing the word," right? A workman need not be ashamed, right?
That's right.
Right? Because we do need to study, and we need iron sharpening its iron, so we do need to come together. And so that's what I wanted to say, that, you know, coming together and discussing these terms, and especially, you know, in, in, in the middle of Proverbs here, and, um, you know, you're kind of getting an open rebuke, uh, to some things. And, um, and it tells you a lot, we learn a lot about human nature, right? So, we, you, you really learn a lot about hu- human nature, but you also learn uh, about nature, and you learn about how things actually ha- happen. So if this, then that, so that's, and even in Pro- all the Proverbs, but especially in thirteen, we're learning, um, that, you know, we should be following instruction. And then we'll find out that there are people who don't like following instruction. Well, there's, you know, as you learn, those folks who do not like following instruction, uh, will run into problems. Um, and so, um, uh, you know, we need to learn as, as Christians that, well, one, the other thing I wanted to talk about Thomas is this. Is the time, one thing about Thomas wrote though, um, and I'm talking about, you know, Thomas of Aquinas. He, 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 he makes this argument, and, and it really opens up the Bible, saying, um, a lot of people thought that all you needed to do is recite and learn the scriptures, right? And so if you learn the Proverbs and recite the Proverbs, and then you would have all of this knowledge, and so naturally things would happen. But what he said, that you have to put knowledge with faith, because God is continuing to teach. We call that a Raimo word, but, but he speaks that, um, you, 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 you can know so much by just, uh, learning and reading the scriptures. But what has to happen is, you have to, um, lean on the grace afforded through the Holy Spirit, for it to really open up to you, to, to get a full understanding of what God wants you to know.
Absolutely.
Right? So there are sometimes, there are people who are book smart, and they can quote scriptures and stuff, but they mean as a snake. And it shows that they don't have the knowledge of God.
Amen.
Right?
Amen.
Okay, so the thing is, is that it, it won't be just what you know, it will be the fruit of what you know. The, the fruit of the Spirit shows that you have the Spirit.
That's right.
So we may be able to quote and say this, and say that, and we may be able to know, right? There's a knowingness to say, okay, there's a certain thing that you know, when we say the lazy man desires, you know, you know, uh, a lazy man desires and has nothing, but the soul of a diligent shall be made rich. Okay, that's a wise saying, and it's in the Bible. What has to happen is, to take it to the next phase in operation, is that, first of all, we have to learn, um, that we get all power from God, that we get, um, you know, um, all our wise direction actually comes from God. So, our knowledge can only take us for a certain point, so our, our, our knowledge can, um, our knowledge can, okay, let's give this example, and then I get off of it. Our knowledge can, uh, teach folks how to make medicine, but it's grace who teaches us access to healing. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Right? And so, we can learn, so one of the examples, another example is the Ten Commandments. The Ten Commandments will tell us what not to do. Only the Holy Spirit can, can empower us not to do it.
Do it. That's right.
Right? So even though we would come and memorize and learn this and discuss it, um, that's why we invite the Holy Spirit in, and so that when we do, now we have application, and not only do we have application, we have power. Does that make sense? Okay, so that's what I wanted to say, as we go into, um, to thirteen, and, um, and I think we can kind of, uh, maybe go to, just maybe go to thirteen seven, and then start going from there. And have that general discretion, and then you don't miss anything. Does that make sense, folks? Uh, y'all preachers on here, did that make sense, or am I talking out of my head?
Yes, sir, it made sense.
Yes. That, that was, that was heavy. That was heavy.
Okay, that's where I spend my days, when I'm on the road.
Yes, yeah. Uh, thank you for that, and thank you for sharing that. So, so that, in, in, in keeping with that, that, that understanding, um, let's, let's do go to, um, Proverbs thirteen and seven.
So, so let me just, let me mention one more thing with that, okay? And the demonstration is this, you remember, um, when, uh, when Jesus went, uh, 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 to, to the, to the synagogue as a child? Y'all remember that?
Right.
Okay, and, and what did he do? He baffled him.
That's right.
As a twelve-year-old.
Twelve-year-old, yep.
He hadn't been, you know, he hadn't been trained under them, he hadn't been dedicated like some of the folks, some of the folks like, you know, Days of Samuel, they would come and get that baby and take you to the thing, and you just stayed there and do that. But he hadn't been there, he was, he was exiled. Remember, he was exiled. He was out in Egypt, out amongst Arabs. Right? But yet, his anointing was superior.
Yes, it was.
Right? And then, and then when he, remember when he read, he just read the Bible one time, he just read out the Bible, same thing they've been reading, and they like, what? He reads with such authority.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And you remember when he walked, when it was, didn't our hearts burn? Right?
Yes.
So there's, there's a, there's, there's knowledge, you know, and I've heard people like read good sermons that were written, but then I've heard people say some things, but through the Spirit of God. It was so anointing, it transformed the room.
Amen.
Right?
Amen.
Right? And so the thing is, is that, yes, we can come and grasp these sayings, but we have to ask the Holy Spirit, what's the application, what, and then apply it to me, so that when we walk out of here, then when I, when I see this, you know, it becomes, um, uh, not second nature, but first nature.
Amen.
That make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then that's what I want. I want, I hope that's helpful.
Yes.
Amen.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. All right, so, do we want, um, let, let's go ahead and read seven? To, um, seven to, to eleven. Let's read seven to eleven. Someone wants to pick that up?
Go ahead, Ash. There is one who makes himself rich, yet has nothing, and one who makes himself poor, yet has great riches. The ransom of a man's life is his riches, but the poor does not hear rebuke. The light of the righteous rejoices, but the lamp of the wicked will be put out. By pride comes nothing but strife, but with well advised is wisdom. Wealth gained by dishonesty will be diminished, but he who gathers by labor will increase.
Okay, folks. Anyone want to share? What you got out of those verses?
Well, um, so, i- if somebody getting ready to say something, I'll be quiet, because I've been talking. Okay, so, this, this actually kind of fits in, um, as, um, as I was opening up with that. So, you, you know, this is a practical application thing, you know, this, this dishonesty and that kind of thing is not gonna work, right? Laziness is not gonna work. Uh, you know, wealth this gained by dishonesty, right? Is not gonna, not gonna last. It may look like it.
Yep.
Uh, um, and so this is a practical application, but it's also a biblical application. All right, so of, 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 you know, if we take it to the church, we can move from the Old Testament to the New Testament, right? And let's, let's look at this from, uh, you know, another reference. So in the latter days, um, the, the Bible said that, um, there was gonna be false prophets. All right, and then, and they were gonna be like wolves in sheep's clothing.
That's right.
And what they're gonna be doing is actually trying to use the wisdom of Christianity to leverage for themselves.
Right.
Right?
Amen, amen. You're all over it tonight.
For filthy lucre and ill-gotten, gotten gain. Right? But it will be, um, like the water that you will not, you will still be thirsty.
That's right.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and so there are a, a lot of times that people will do things, even in, in, you know, in the body of Christ, that will be dishonest for ill-gotten gain. They'll be doing, like, he's, you know, they're saying, look, don't, don't pray like the publicans do, because people are praying to impress people.
Absolutely.
Right? And so that's, that's dishonest and, and hypocritical.
Yes.
And that is a wolf in sheep's clothing.
Absolutely.
Right?
Yes.
Amen.
That will be diminished. It, it will, because, um, actually that, you know, the people will perish over that. And, and so we have to learn in all of our transactions to be totally honest because of who we're representing. And, and sometimes we'll say, well, I, I don't wanna, um, I, I, you know, we don't wanna do something, um, uh, or, or a certain thing that we don't wanna do, but what we wanna learn is to actually do things that honor God. And if we do things to honor God, then we don't have to worry about, you know, doing things that are going to, um, come up blank at the end, gonna tarnish, uh, our reputation, the church's reputation, uh, you know, and all of that. Um, and that has happened over and over again. And that's why, you know, if we remember about this other thing we talked about, Brother Vince, two weeks ago, and, and all this, and, and, you know, to keep in mind, that these, uh, proverbs are the observation of a wise man over time.
Amen.
All right.
So some things that people do, if you just take a snapshot like today, and you don't, you don't get to look at it how it ends, you'll be like, oh, I need to do that, I need to do that.
Yep.
But when you've got somebody like Solomon who has seen a lot, been a lot, you know, after a while you'll see some things, well, then you know, you know, if anybody on this thing, if you've been doing something long time, too long, or, you know, long enough, and then, uh, you know, if you're making a cake and stuff, and, and see somebody do something and whatnot, and they don't grease the pan, trying to be taking shortcut, you know what's gonna happen. You know what's gonna happen, when they get ready to take that cake out of the bottom, you know, right? And you could sit there and say, okay, and it looked good on the top. But if they haven't prepared the pan, it doesn't show up until time at the end.
Yes.
And some people will cook some cake and stuff, like, okay, you know, like, and we sitting up there looking at them for cake pans and say, wait a minute, now that's been sitting there a while. You know, you don't supposed to let that sit for about, you know, more, more than ten minutes, but you got to let it sit some, you know what I'm saying? You know, you start knowing, right? And so when you see somebody to try to make a shortcut, then you know at the end, when it's time to put it together, you know they're gonna have a problem with that cake. Life is the same way, Proverbs is saying the same thing. And, and so, um, I, it helps, it helps me to understand. I might see somebody run past me and say, because they're doing this, that, and that, you know, and, and stuff, and you might see them, okay, their car, they're driving this kind of car, or they're, you know, it might be a church this, you know, wow, it's, it's, it's wide open, it might be a ministry, right? They're doing this, this, and this. it might be a church this, you know, wow, it's, it's, it's wide open, it might be a ministry, right, they're doing this, this, and this, right? And you're like, wow, you know, I'm just, you know, I'm doing Wednesday and Tuesday, I'm baptizing four people, you know, so, right? But you keep on waiting.
Yeah.
And keep on looking.
Right.
And keep on waiting.
Amen.
And keep on looking.
That's right.
Cuz the same ones that ran to that show kind of thing, gonna be the same ones looking for another.
Amen.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
Because, and I was reading another thing, and I'm, I need to be quiet, I'm talking to him, um, but, but I was studying this thing. When you look at what the word is and what the word is repetitive, and it may be bor- boring, cuz it's the same thing over and over again. And a lot of people are trying to come up with something new. So that they can be flash, oh, you want, oh, man, this right here is this right here, you got to come and run and see this because the Lord is doing something new. Well, you had to be careful about that.
That's right.
Now, he might, you know, do something in a different flavor, but it's gonna be the same thing.
Amen.
At what, and I change not, right?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
So, so when folks are making different allowances and stuff like that, they're, a lot of times they're being dishonest so that they can point to themselves.
Oh, my God.
Or they can, um, are they who doing the people? Right? Jim, Jim Jones said, oh, we're gonna start a new camp, and we're gonna put nine hundred and some people on a plane, and we going down here and start a whole new thing, cuz the Lord is saying it. Well, what happened?
Everybody died.
Yeah, that's right. He took all their land, all their stuff, he, 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 you know, had their women and everything, and all, everybody died in the, in the woods. And folks reading the Bible. Quoting proverbs.
That's right.
Knowing the Lord is my shepherd.
Yep.
Some of the most religious. People in the world went down there and let a man fill him, feed, feed him pork.
And fatted people, yes.
Okay. So they had, they had intellectual grasp.
Come on now.
But they didn't have an understanding.
And that's why the Bible tell us, Pastor, out of all our getting.
Get what?
Out of all our getting, get understanding. Get understanding. That's true.
And so, this, 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 this personal wisdom has to understand it. And so, they have this understanding and teaching us, so there's certain things that you see, that you know, that are gonna indicate, gonna indicate some things, right? And, and these, when we learn these couplets that are written in here, it gives us and it's access to us both sides of the corner and wisdom.
Yes.
So, now I'm be quiet, so somebody else can say something.
Amen.
I think, I think we have, um, Sister Dawn or Brother Scott, you guys, you have your hands up?
Uh, well, yeah, it's me.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm looking at, um, chapter thirteen, uh, on seven. And, uh, says, there is that makeeth himself rich, have nothing. And what that says to me is, he took God out of the equation, he, I'm a self-made man, I did all this myself, you know? You know, I, it, it was all me, you know, and so when he, when he took on that action, you know, God watches and he lets it go and he watches what happens, right? He ends up with nothing. Because, uh, he ended up being a dead-end road because we have to bless one another, you know, we, we have a commandment to love God with everything in us and to love our neighbors as ourselves, like, at the same time. And, uh, so it's, God gets the glory if it's equal. That, that's as, as you're doing it. But what that, that reminds me of was, uh, I heard a legend of this man, and I'm not gonna mention his name, but, uh, he owns mountains, he owns properties all over this town. I mean, he is a very, very powerful guy. And I walked in and I talked to the secretary, uh, go see him and talk to him. He barely acknowledged me, and what I thought I was gonna be impressed by him, I really, he almost made me cry, cuz I really felt sorry for him. Cuz he was just in the dark, just looking at hundreds and hundreds of keys. And just playing with these keys, you know, like, like little baby. And he, he was just barely igno- he, he was so alone. So, this in just words, this is actually fact of, uh, how people can be sometimes. You know, they get on this runaway train and, uh, ignore all the stops, you know? And then you're on this dead-end road, he has everything, but he has nothing. And, and when I walked away, I really, uh, I'm, it really woke me up on what that you can have everything, but you can just lose everything too. He has everything, but he doesn't, and that's kind of what, uh, what this says, you know? And, uh, so, those that make themselves poor have great riches, right? You have to rely on God when you have nothing. You have to rely on others. You know, you have to learn to trust, you have to learn to open up to others, you have to learn to give of yourself, you know? And, and when you have a can of beans, you know, you you, you think about God, you think about where it came from and, and, uh, and all, all the details that, that came into making those beans, because you're so grateful just to have that.
That's right.
And that's where he has great riches, because his heart, you know, goes to the Creator, the source of all, all things, and the blessings come from that. That's, that's, uh, Jesus, you know, he loves everybody. And, uh, he does it, and he feeds the birds in the air, you know, he feeds all the animals, he feeds us too.
Well, and, and I'm glad you said that, because, you know, tho- tho- that's the the undergirding of our understanding of where all of our wealth comes from and our trust comes from. And I, I, I wanna piggyback on what you're saying and also what Pastor was sharing. There's this, you know, I want you guys to, you know, you know, work with me on this, or, you know, push back or whatever has to happen with this, but there's this comparison today, cuz Pastor touched on that, about what we're doing in the later days, what's happening here. Um, for verse seven and eight, what touched me was, we're, we're talking about these riches. And when you see, um, today's society, our youth, um, the, what we're getting on, uh, for advertisement, um, when we see the successes of people, uh, it's measured by riches. It's measured by how much, and I'm, I'm not saying that we have to be poor, we have to denounce um, gold, or, 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 or money, or our wealth, I'm not talking about that, it's just, what is our goal? Our goal sometimes today is, we're only successful if we're rich. And you see that through our cars, jewelry, clothing, and, and I'm not talking about out there in the street. I'm talking about in the church. That, that's the showcase for some of the riches in a lot of places. So, when we look at those, and that, that verse seven hit me, it says, those who, um, makes himself rich, yet has nothing. So, when, when, when those riches are sought after, you lost your relationships, you're, you're concerned about who's trying to befriend you, because you believe they're gonna take your money. Um, you, you, everything centered around keeping that wealth, which could keep you away from relationships, keep you away from service, keep you away from just being attainable by those who need to find Christ. Cuz we're supposed to be those, uh, those examples. But yet, if you make yourself poor, what I saw in that was, if riches are not the center of your life and God is, you can care less about riches, even though you have it. So, it empowers you to be rich, because you're giving more, you're serving more, you're more approachable, so you can share that. And what Pastor said, here's this wise person who's been through some things to know, to write this for us, to put this down. They've been through those, they've seen how riches destroy lives, but more importantly, your relationship with God. So, it, it's, 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 you know, interesting for me to see how much this relates to, like Pastor said, the end of days, where we are right now. And, and that's before, Brother Scott, before they're getting to understand that God is their all. Because, listen, when they're in school, when you lis- when they listen kind of music that, that, you know, we don't hear that they're listening to, they're on the bus and they're hearing this, it's all about money, riches, and fame, and being above somebody. That starts at an early age, and then when they get older, their status and, and mindset of being successful is in, 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 is in the ideal of obtaining money, property, and, and good things, finer things, to show people. And, and, and honestly, folks, that's sometimes how marriages get started. You know, they have a hundred thousand dollar wedding no more. And you're doing these, and, and sixteen birthday party turns into a, a, a mortgage payment for somebody. Just where we are today speaks to these two verses, I didn't even get into eight, but it's like, the ransom of a man's life is his rich. You don't feel like you're living if you're not getting to that, those riches part. You don't feel like you, you've achieved anything, or you made a mark on this world if you don't have those riches. Um, and that takes us so far away from what God wants us to be, to be approachable and share His word with folks. What do you guys say about that?
Well, real quick, I, I would say it's a good, it'd be a good season to watch the story of Ebenezer Scrooge.
There you go. Yes. Yes.
The Christmas Carol.
Yes.
What profit to gain, a man to gain the world.
It was just something. Yes. And, and, and that goes back to depression and everything else, Pastor, because people are getting in debt around this time.
That's right.
Not me.
How about the young rich ruler?
Yep.
Uh, he thought he had it all sold up, but God asked for his prized possession, and that was his money. And he couldn't give that up.
Amen.
He couldn't give that up.
His riches.
Right, he couldn't give his riches up, but God had something so magnificent for him if he would've just turned and do it, and done what God told him to do with his money. And sometime, our money can be our God, you know, and that's what we seeing in our world today. You know, we seeing, we seeing people killing for money. And some of them kill for, you know, they'll take a life for a little bit of money. So, you know, when you, when you, uh, when you, uh, when you have money, you got to wear that, you got to wear it as a loose garment. Because God give us riches, and those riches is for the kingdom of God. Everything that we have is for His kingdom. You know, that's why He give us, you know, He give us certain things, so we can have this for the kingdom of God. The use for His kingdom.
Right.
So, and we have to give everything to Him. Our minds, our bodies, our soul, our car, our clothes, you know, because.
We didn't make that happen. We didn't make that.
You know, because that's what He did, and we follow the life of Jesus, that's what He did. He had such a, his heart was so loving and so kind. People was hungry, He fed them. You know, they was thick, He healed them. They couldn't see, He, you know, He, He gave sight to the blind. You know, so we said that He is our God, He was our example. So, we have to follow what He did. We can't hold on to nothing in this world. You know, because it's not for everlasting, it's only temporary. You know, whatever God has blessed us with, we take that and we give it to the kingdom of God. You know, do what, do what the kingdom wants us to do. And that's sometime you got to feed the hungry, you know, got to ride people in your car.
Okay, okay. I'm about to steal a phrase from Pastor, what does that look like? And you, you there already? Yes.
Yes, we have to do that. If we say that we love now, anybody could say they love you, but love is an action word. You know, it demonstrates, cuz Jesus could've said all night and all day, well, I love y'all, I love y'all. I love y'all, and never came down and died for us. He showed His love. He was the epitome of love. So, we, we say that we are His children and His representative, we got to do like He do. And it ain't gonna happen overnight, but we're striving to go that way. We're striving to be like Him, our Father.
No. Love is a tree that always have fruit.
Amen. Yes.
And it blooms in all seasons.
Yeah. Amen.
I challenge that whole statement to say also, this is, these two statements are a choice of us that we're making.
Yes.
We choose to look at riches that way. We choose to not let riches be the center of our life.
Absolutely.
We honestly get to make that choice for something that God gifts, gifts to us. You know, the, the cars that we have, that's a gift for us, but we choose how we're gonna serve God with it.
Alright, absolutely.
And I, but I, this is the only thing I'm gonna put a butt in it now. It's ho- it is almost impossible to do that without Holy Spirit. You will have the desires, the desires of our heart is actually corrupt except for the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
That's right.
Yeah, all of us will be wanting the same thing, the same stuff, and sacrificing for the same stuff, except for the Holy Spirit change our desires.
You got to have it. That's right.
Amen.
Yep, so this pastor, the other night, you know, I went out to this other church and stuff, and they were having about, about, um, they, they passed a bucket about the third time. And he said, uh, y'all got to learn how to give, because I just wanna let you know um, that, uh, my church, you know, just the other night, gave me the keys to a Rolls Royce. And I was like, let me wait that, get to talk to Vince. He gave me no keys to a Bible.
He better stay there.
Well, see, what's that got to do with anything? How many baptisms did you do, you know? Um, you know, how many people did you feed, you know? And that's, cuz that's what Jesus is about, and, and so folks that got in into that stuff.
Right, no.
Yeah, and folks were like that, when he said that, people are, oh, glory to God, hallelujah. What is that saying?
Glory to His pot.
Okay.
I'm talking about. Pastor, when I go to the service, if I'm gonna give whatever I'm gonna give, now, if you gotta speak and you ask for extra. But, I don't let go when I get, and I'm giving it often, cuz I don't give no little bit often, they say, well, we ask for another often, I don't give no more. Because, when I went there, that's exactly what I meant to give, and I meant to give it to the minister.
And I meant to give it to the ministry. I don't mean to be, don't be begging me for nothing, but put some more money, you need this for that one. Don't you got a a boat in your church? Don't you got somebody in church? You got a bank account? Get it from out of there. I just don't like that. Don't be begging for money. If God wants to beg, he would, you know what he said? He said, he came home so we can be rich. But he ain't talking about with money. We got to realize that. We got to be rich in the spirit. We got to know. It's like he, the pastor was talking earlier about Jim Jones, those people that had the Holy Ghost in them, they would have never drank none of that poison. Cause if I tell them, I tell them, you drink it first. I said, that's the way I am. I don't, don't do that. That's wrong.
Right. And so what we do, uh, preaching is that we get things mixed up. See, and and that's what I'm saying is that it gets mixed up. The Bible is separating. Yeah, so that's, that's why we learn proverbs to separate. So when you can discern, it gives you discernment. And say, when I, when I hear that, it's telling me something.
All right.
I hear that somebody is trying to, you know, wealthy in a certain way or that kind of deal, and it's all about them getting wealthy. You know, what is it gonna look like? If I come up, you know, if I roll up in a Rolls Royce, and then I got about ten people walking the church. Right? Or 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 ten people in my congregation homeless.
There you go.
Okay.
I agree with you on that.
Yeah, okay, so 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 how that work? And so, ca- cause the Bible would say, you know, when we go to the New Testament, they said, look. That everybody sold goods, put them together, and nobody went without.
That's it. There you go.
That's, that's scripture.
That sure is, Pastor.
Y'all, y'all remember that? Okay, so so that's what I'm saying is that, um, that, you know, we, we learn priorities. And we learned that we don't steal, actually steal from God and stuff to make our own self wealthy. And and and, you know, and we don't steal from the community, uh, to make our own self wealth.
Amen.
And we, and when you start do- when you start, um, when you, uh, uh, get away from that, and when you're doing the right thing. The law will supply every joint.
Lord, have mercy. Tell it one more time.
So that, that's why you don't, you don't do that stuff. And that's why we had to learn in proverbs and and learn these things. And stuff, and you know, learn it in families, and learn, then we learn how to, how to, how to treat each other. So we're not looking out, out the eye. Did, did you get, did you get more than I got right there? Did you, you know, you don't have to worry about that if, if you, you know, if you're not a glutton.
Amen, that, that's just like somebody told me today, that was like, um, that was like, um. I don't know about you, but that was like one kind of food sounds and stuff. They're like, sometimes you got a lot of stuff, you know, that's just the world nowadays. I said, but when you know the Bible, you know that greed is the root of evil and stuff. You, you, I say that why he tell her, don't look, don't keep these worldly things, like. You gotta, cause he will provide, and you know, when you know that and you believe that, you can't go based off, but everybody try to steal you wrong when you know it's right.
Amen.
That, that quick game is just saying here, you know, is that, i- is what it's doing is. It is, is, is a disbelief that God gonna supply.
That's right.
Yeah, you, you don't believe, uh, you don't believe that doing right, your God gonna supply you. That's what it is. So you got to go sell some drugs and stuff like that. You don't believe that God can supply if you get on your right thing.
And then they have to be the one to answer that when it come to judgment day, like, I know where I'm going. I ain't trying to be like them.
I, I, I like verse seven, uh, verse eleven, and the message Bible says, easy come, easy go. He dut- diligence pays off. You know, back to that wisdom piece, when we, when we're talking about these things. Those, uh, like you said, um, Sister Dee Dee, that they said, well, if you just do this, and just, just goes right into the line what pastor says. Our hearts desire is to get over. Our hearts desire is to make that quick buck, is to do those things. Or is to get that, that, that gain of whatever over the next person by doing any means necessary. Which we see that's happening in politics, um, schools, our homes and our lives, in churches. We see that being so much of a norm. Like you said, um, the person said, everybody's doing it. But, you know, um, we always tell our kids, I'm glad we didn't name you everybody.
Like, like he said, be the head, not the tail, the head, then not the bar, and the bug, and not.
That's right, Vince. You do right there. Amen. Cause I, 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 I remember, uh, uh, there's a lot of things going on when I was in New York. You know, people are flimflam if you're not careful and be smart. I woke up, chant Chase Manhattan with my chick, and a fellow standing out with a bag full of hundred dollar bills. And he said to me, um, you put your money in this bag, and I'm gonna go round the building, we go, I'm gonna spit it out fifty fifth. I said, I tell you what, give it to me. And I go, see, that's how people flimflam and take fuck you. And 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 see, we got to be careful when we walking in, because a lot of people can be in the church. And they got full tongue. You be giving and giving to them and don't realize because you nice. But we got to realize that, we got to concern God. You just can't just give everybody, you got to pray about it. You know, and ask the Lord, should you do it? Because I, you know, I, I grew up the hard way, and it's, it's hard for me to just. Had any, when I got saved, the Lord delivered me from holding back. I give it in a minute. If you call me up right now and say you need some money, and I got it, I'll say, meet me somewhere. You know, could be, for the simple reason is, I'm here to help you, because I don't know, if I do it for you, God gonna do it for me. That's the way we got to think, because a lot of people don't think like that, you know? But I thank God for, for delivering me from being stingy, because I was. My way to tell the truth, because some of you, some church people is really stingy now.
So you, you know, you, you, you said something, um, because, you know, that really taps into, uh, verse nine. Where it says, the lie of the righteousness rejoices, but the lamb of the wicked will be put out. W- we're supposed to read, hey, proverbs right here. We're supposed to re- rejoice in when we're reading this. To one, find out where we need to be. Cause if we're finding out we are some of these people who are going after the riches. We're getting the truth that we need to change our ways now, before Christ comes back. Thank God he gave us Cliff Notes. Thank God we got a cheat sheet to, to go ahead and get it right again. This, you know, back then, they had to walk that walk. In a way that we didn't have to, you know?
Well, if we look at, uh, let's look at thirteen, fourteen. And, oh, eh, fourteen and fifteen. If somebody will grab that in the message there.
We're gonna let someone read that, give everybody a chance to get into this.
You said, read it. The teach, the teaching of the wise is a fountain of life, so no more drinking from death. Panic wells, sounds thankfully made for gracious living, but liars walk a rough road.
Wow. Ouch.
See, that's my fool right there.
Y'all are true. That make you pause.
Can you imagine the play on words here? The wise is a fountain of life.
Yeah, and people wanting to be living, and they saying, living it up is this and this and the other, but then you see them die early. Right? They out there, they rolling fast and stuff like that, but they die early. But if you, you take your time and stuff and do the things, the wise things. See, your, your health is better, you're not, you ain't got a crick in your neck, looking over, over your shoulder. Jumping every time a door slam, because you thought somebody shot you for doing something.
You're teaching, you're teaching, geez.
That's, that's just like my friend, I was shooting her. And then I was telling her, like, the stuff I go through, had like, certain people do, and they want to tell them my keys, you know, they said. Toxic and stuff, and I was like, I, I be holding my keys from saying stuff. She said, you better than me, because I would, uh. She said, I say stuff away, I thank you. And I started to tell her, the Bible say. That the wise people would think before they talk, and only fools would react without thinking. I should have, that should be my part.
A- and and proverbs allows us to teach that. I mean, we, we regurgitate this, we, we, we give this back out. Um, but like I said, Sister Dee Dee, when you have that one-on-one conversation, you get an opportunity. You're not telling them off, you're just.
Trying to help them live, that's what that is.
Yes, sir, correct. And then, like, he said, like, he chest tied those who he love. So you got chest tied.
Uh, uh, pastor says something that, that is real. Gosh, jeez. Talking about me. I remember, you know, living was, you know, making sure you can do this, or, or being out all night. Or going here, or going there, and say, oh, yeah, I was doing this, I was doing that, you know, in the name of fun. Not going there to, you know, help somebody move or, or help some, give someone a ride to work so they can. You know, you know, those times in my young life, it was all about me. Um, and and that's where some people, you know, and I'm thanking God, I can say that now. But some people don't make it long enough to say that. Um, they get caught up in some of the wrong things, um, Pastor share many times, you know, in the clubs, those bullets just whistling by you. You know, th- there's a lot of grace and mercy that gets us where we are to understand that this. This word is something that we need to live and share. Share enough to youth that they can get that message before, you know, their lesson. Becomes a, a deadly lesson, because it says, no more drinking from death tainted wells. And that's real right there.
Yeah, it's poisonous. It just, we need to understand that it's literally poisonous to live a certain way. It's poisonous. It key. Shorten your life. It poisons communities, poisons relationships, poisons churches. Poisoned children.
Amen.
Certain life poisons stuff.
That's something. Bullets flying by, you're singing by in the club. See, the bullet ain't got no name, or they're shooting at Vince and hit me, then Vince is lucky. And I'm dead. That Vince said it flying by you, come on now. Stay out the club.
Man, amen, he spared my life. I was ready by somebody that died when I used to go clubbing, like maybe two years ago. The bullets was ready to buy me, and then, like, last year, uh, he took, I had a dream, and he told me, he spared my sister's life. And he told me, I'm going to no more club.
I ain't got for, for obedience.
So then, so you just open up for thirteen, uh, thirteen sixteen?
That's right. Well, you know, the, 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 um. The impact on this and and. It, it's interesting, because we had a meeting today, and you could see different, I, I saw different ages of people. In our meeting, and some of the folks were, you know. Their mindset, when they're looking at their phones and they're talking about events and sharing that. One was looking at, okay, the feds are cutting interest rates. This impact is gonna happen, and so on and so forth. Stock market is going down, all these different things. The, the other group was saying, wow, it looks like we're gonna, um, be able to save some money on this, and so on and so forth. Everything was, and you know, and I'm not saying there's something wrong with this, that we, we shouldn't be mindful of, you know, economic conditions. So we can be fruitful and take opportunities that God shares with us. But the mindset was about those riches. Um, it wasn't about, you know, wondering if people are, are looking at these things to get them prepared for this move, or. You know what I mean? The mindset were about, how can I maintain where I am? And then there's some, and and not to make it seem like, you know, you shouldn't be doing that. Those things do have to happen, but as pastor said, we have to have the right, this right heart and mind. When we do this, to make sure that our gains are for God's purpose, not our own. That we can help somebody, we can do something with it, but we can share this knowledge with those who can get this. To further their life, to be a part of God's service in church and everything else. I, I think, um, uh, Scott, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I'm looking at fourteen of, of all the wise, the fountain of life. When you, I don't know, if you ever. Thought of how to design a fountain, or, or looked at a fountain and go, how, why is that water?
Five minutes, Scott, can you hold up? Can we get everybody to mute their phone?
Messing up, somebody's phone.
I was, I was looking at the, the law of the wise, fountain of life. And it, I don't know, you ever walk up to a fountain like in a. In the city or something, and you're seeing it, you know? It, it's like it's, it's endless, like this, this water is continually renewed. Each time, you know, it's the same water in the basin, but once you, you activate it. Let's see, you're activating with the Holy Spirit, the water, life-giving water, it, it keeps, you know. Springing up into the air, and then it comes back down, and then it goes through the pump, and it comes back up again. And, uh, so the fountain of life, it's when you're, you know. You renewing your mind, you're re- doing, uh, things that pass down generation to generation. Uh, you know, it's the same wisdom, but it's passed down, and it renews into another generation. And that's how I see the, the law of the wise is, is a fountain of life. And when you, uh. Are in that, and your focus is on God and where he has you. And you see snares coming at you for whatever reason, you know, you know, hey, I, I've seen what happened to that guy. You know, I've seen what happened to, you know, even the wealthy, you, you know, with their ill-gotten gains, that you. Hey, I seen what happened to him, you know? And, and I, and it's like you said, Vince, it's like, you know, we have the crib notes here, we have the. The, uh, the answers to the test right in front of us, and we have a choice, we could check A or B. And that is gonna be the, uh, either our life is gonna be easier, or it's gonna be harder. And that's what proverbs is, it's like a test. Uh, either our life is gonna be easier, or it's gonna be harder, and that's what Proverbs is, it's like a test. You have one choice or the other choice. So that that's what I had to say about, uh, the fountain.
I throw this question out here, though, cause Pastor says something early. Um, like I said, the test. Um. Pastor said, you know, a lot of things we can't, we can't do, we won't be able to do without the Holy Spirit. So when we're going through these, are we really seeing the Holy Spirit as a factor in this? I I know we're talking about wisdom and everything else, but do we understand, or is. Let let's, is it clear when we're reading this? That how much the Holy Spirit takes apart in. Our our decisions to make? Did did that, I know he said that earlier, but was that something on our mind that? We inherently knew as we're going through these proverbs?
Yes, sir, cause that's why, uh, that's like the other day, um, this man had dropped some. I just heard like, uh, somebody speak on YouTube, that was talking about how. Uh, if somebody, their friend, or somebody lost their keys in trash can, you know, they wanna help, and they wanna dig, oh, I ain't digging. Ain't digging in dirty trash can, but if it was your homeboy, you'd be like, okay, we about to find the keys, we about digging in the trash can. And then maybe like two days later, uh, I was driving down the road, this man, he had three trash cans, all his trash flew off. The truck, and I drove past him, and it's like, the spirit was telling me, turn around and go help, it's everybody, you know, passing by, you know, he old. He needs some help, so it's like, we know it's the right, and you have, and if it was you, you don't want, you don't want that help, so. Yes, sir, I understand. And I turned back around and he'll, you know.
Good for you.
And he he was asking somebody that was in church, and he 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 told me how he stopped drinking for two years. And I I actually stopped drinking for two years, it was like a connection too, and then he prayed for me, so it was like the spirit led me to go.
Amen. Hallelujah.
Wow, that's a blessing.
Yeah, it is.
So, looking at, you know, what we've been discussing, if we if we move forward. Um, you know, it it continues to show the comparison of doing things God way. And and, um, and when we're looking at seventeen. Uh, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Did we read those?
All right.
It shows us in a way of of selecting which ways we're gonna respond to what's happening in life.
Yeah. Can we get someone to share, read those?
A common sense person lives, lives good sense, fools litter the sanctuary with silliness. Irresponsible talk makes a real mess of things, but a reliable reporter is a genuine pre- uh. Presence, refuse discipline, and 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 up home is, embrace correction, and live in honor honored life.
Hmm. Hmm.
You you know, um. Seventeen, but a reliable reporter is a healing presence. That just reminds me of Luke. Uh, how he want to get the record straight, so we can have the truth.
Well, what we're seeing is a comparison of two tracks of life.
That's right.
Right.
Um, there's there's a foolish way of life that that doesn't want correction. Uh, that does, you know, that doesn't really yield to wisdom, doesn't wanna know any more than it knows. And you know, rebellion is the first step of witchcraft.
That's right.
Right.
So, if you ever wanna see some witchcraft, just tell somebody, this is the best thing to do.
Hey, man, that's crazy, I that been on my mind lately, cause I was like. People think, like, all you do is pray for people, when stuff, when stuff start happening, I said. People are swearing now, you know, I'm doing witchcraft, and all I do is believe in God and read the Bible and stuff. But I said, this is the best witchcraft that, you know, people can, oh, say you do, cause this is like God's word. I've been thinking that for these past couple days.
Right, so the the thing is, is that, you know, the thing is, is that, um, for, um. You know, what God is is has been doing, is doing, and stuff, is a way of life.
Mm hmm.
Um, and so witchcraft has been something that tries to duplicate it in a different way.
That's right.
This Satan has always tried to copy what God has, because he has no creation.
Amen.
So he doesn't have creation, Satan, um, does not have creation, so he copies. And so the deal is, is that while we're praying, there are people conjuring. And witchcraft, witches conjure. And they they conjure from as as far as opposite, and they work in the in the darkness of evil. Right, so, um, if you ever see somebody who bucks against everything, and is anti this, anti that. Then what you, that's not too far from witchcraft. And they may not, well, I'm not a witch, well, you just keep asking them, that's what I'm saying, just keep asking them to go along with something. And, uh, you know, go along, come come to church with me, go do this right here, come do the right thing, study the Bible. And if you get, they, when they get tired and cuss you out over that stuff, and you know.
Amen.
Okay. You know what you're dealing with. Yeah, absolutely, you know. So you got people who are saying, well, I'm not dealing in witchcraft, but the thing is, is that rebellion, somebody who is rebellious. Who can't take instruction, or form, take instruction from anybody, I don't listen to nobody. I don't listen to nobody, can't nobody tell me nothing.
And that, and Pastor, that's when you know that they're not reading their word, because it clearly says. That you need to seek, um, you know, the elders, and there are people who can to tell you something, and can pour into you. And if you're reading the word, you'll be open to that, and if you have Holy Spirit, you'll be more open to that, so. Um, that's how you know when something is missing, because if they're that disobedient, if that. Against what you're trying to do, and you're trying to do the best for them, or benefit them, then you know that, you know. So somebody's not reading what God said.
Right.
Amen, I just seen that in Genesis, where, um, how, um, the boy. It's the elders, and he didn't take their word, but when he asked the young people, he took their word, and he should have said the word from the elders.
Right.
Mm hmm. That people have, oh, go ahead.
What I hear Proverbs saying to me, and it's coming from Matthew eleven and twenty eight.
Come on.
It says, then Jesus said, come to me, all of you who are weary and carry heavy burdens. And you know, when we're not listening to what the Holy Spirit is saying. You 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 heavy, there's a heavy burden on you. You know, because you're not aligning yourself up with what God is saying. So the Holy Spirit is saying here, take my yoke. Proverb is is telling us to take the yoke upon you. Let me teach you, so Proverbs is teaching us, and we need teaching. We need teaching, we need training, so God has opened up the book of Proverbs to every believer. Because we need more, we don't have enough, so he's showing us, uh, uh. Details of life, lying, cheating, stealing, you know, he's showing us this, showing us this. And a lot of people that's in the church is doing these kind of things. But the the word says, take my yoke upon you, and let me teach you. Let me teach you, I wanna teach you, glory to God, and he will teach us. How to have his character, we have to have the character of Christ. You we can't say we in the church, we're in the church, and you know, the church is not the building, the church is the individual.
Uh, go ahead now.
You know, so we can't say that we, you know, we're. We're God representatives, and we're not doing it exactly what he's saying, he said, let me teach you. I wanna teach you right from wrong, and we have to make choices every day. You know, to seek first the kingdom of God, and everything, all his righteousness, and everything else will be added. So let me teach you, because I am humble, and we have to have a humble spirit, a gentle spirit.
Come on here.
A gentle heart, you know, as as the man and the woman of God. As God tell them what to tell you, we cannot come against what God is telling. Telling the the man and the God, the man and the woman of God to tell you, because what they're doing. They're following the vision and the assignment of their heavenly Father. And they love you so much, till they gonna give you the truth. So we have to be teachable. We have to be teachable, because if you're not teachable, you know, what what your assignment. That God has put on your life, you won't be able to accomplish that, because you're not teachable. And we can't kick against a prick, you know, like Paul was kicking against Jesus. He had scales on his eyes, and he was kicking against the teaching of Jesus, he had to meet Jesus. Jesus had to, you know, Jesus had to fix this. So what went, what what he, what the lo- the Holy Spirit is telling us. That we have to find, find rest for your soul, find rest for your soul. We don't supposed to be in church, and we're uneasy, and we don't know what we wanna do. Sunday, we wanna live for Christ, then Monday, we wanna do what we wanna do, you know. That we we can't live like that, we can't live like that, we must obey. What the word of God is telling us to do, okay? Cause he he wants you to have a better life, you know, because we are responsible for other people. We got to teach other people, and you can't teach them the wrong way, that's why you got to hear what God is saying to your church. God is talking to your church, he said, I'm humble, gentle at heart, and you will find rest for your soul. For my yoke is easy, come on now. And my burden to bear, and the burden I give you is light. The burden is light.
Yeah, it is.
Why are we going through all of these difficulties, year after year, year after year, year after year? God said, my burden is light, this is not hard, when you have an open heart and an open mind. To be teachable, we must be teachable, cause if you're not teachable, you can't do the will of the Father. That's why Jesus was so successful, because his father taught him. And he was willing to do whatever his father told him to do.
Amen, hallelujah.
I'm finished.
That's the truth.
Talk about dropping the mic.
Wow.
I have mercy.
Yep, me and Dee.
Yeah, that's, um. Wow, um.
Thank you, Lord.
Talk about being deep, um. Um, thank, thank, thank you for that.
Praise God, praise the Lord, God is good. Can't fix it.
That that was a serious message for us, um, and then I thank you for letting God use you that way. Uh, I I think, um, we should really, um. Really take, um, Proverbs for what it does for us, as Pastor says, it shows us these. Uh, parallel.
Yes.
Examples. And 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 as he gives us an opportunity to live with him forever. Or die forever, um.
Then.
Are there, yes. And this this really shows where we can go. Uh, we've been given that, and and it's poured in, I mean, you guys talked tonight, and I thank you for that. Cause we need to hear that, uh, we all did, um, I think we received it well tonight, um. I I I can't, I can't say no more than after that, uh, Vince, this morning, I thank you for that, uh.
God, he gets the glory, thank you, Jesus.
Um, so so you know where we are in Proverbs, and we're gonna, uh, call it a wrap tonight. Um, because, yeah, I think we don't wanna get too much into this, cause we could be at this all night. Um.
Till in the morning.
Till the end of time.
That's right. We can share with Brother Chris, we we got in on it, we got in on it, it was, and it got in on us, so, uh. I don't think you'd be able to shake this off in the morning, I I won't, um, Pastor, we we'll pass it to you.
Let's thank, let's thank God for, um, teach you Vince, he did good tonight, if I don't get nothing about you, Vince, I'll tell you, okay?
To God be the glory, thank you, God.
We're gonna report back to Chris that he did a good job.
Yes.
Yeah, I I was listening, great lesson, great lesson.
Okay, Chris, alright.
Are are we gonna be on next week?
Oh, that's a good question.
It's Christmas Day.
Yeah, because it's Christmas Eve, he's. Yeah, we talking about Jesus.
It's 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 Christmas Day, if y'all have, uh, have the desire, we'll get on for a few minutes. And just thank, thank God for that day, you know, uh, um, if we want to want to do that. If you feel like you can break away from, or break away with the family for a little bit.
Well, it's his birthday.
Um, uh, we're we're gonna teach you about that one day, but.
Amen.
It was actually equinox and stuff, and they think that, you know, that Jesus may have been born closer to March, but I'm just saying.
Right, right.
We had the majority to talk, we have the maturity to be able to talk about it. It was actually a different, it was actually a different holiday that was adopted, um, in in reality.
Winter solstice?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're getting approaching the shortest day of the year. And so they actually, we it's, uh, we don't know exactly what day.
Right.
That Christ was born. Do honor him, honor the birth of Christ during this December season, so we'll we'll do that. So if we feel like they want, um, want to come together for a few minutes on on Christmas Day, that's fine with me. So, just, uh.
I'm I'm all in.
Alright, so if you set it up, Vince, we'll get on for just a few minutes, and.
We'll use the same Bible study line.
Okay.
We'll be there.
We we'll be in Murder Beach, I don't, I don't think we could. We got a big thing in Murder Beach.
Alright, and, uh, we want to tell all the members here that on Saturday night is, I I can't, I don't, you know, we don't. Buy everybody a present, but our gift to our church members is we open up our house every year, the Saturday before. Um, uh, the Saturday before Christmas, and, uh, as long as the Saturday is not on Christmas Eve. And that's why we, you know, we open up our doors and our pots, and so you come in our pots and pans and find something to eat, and say Merry Christmas. You can go ahead and go spend the rest of your money you want to, but. But come by the house at six o'clock, here at the house, you're always welcome. That's our gratitude for our church, uh, family, and to our friends.
I can show up to your house too?
Yes, sir.
You got horses?
Yes, sir.
How about planes?
Yes, sir.
Well, good, you got everything, I I don't know, I might make it there, I don't know.
And if you have a special dietary order, you can go ahead and put that in now, and we'll have it.
I was gonna say, we got some, some special items as well.
Got some stuff for non seafood lovers. So we love for you, but the main thing we have is love and fellowship.
Well, uh, what we do on, on that Saturday, we give to the, what about the children, Vince? We have a lot of kids, cause I got like, um, a box and all kinda stuff that the, uh, elves and the VFW, um, for the kids. So I'll get bicycles and different things. So we do that Saturdays. So I don't think you'll be seeing me. You can bring me some to the church tomorrow and Sunday and I have you.
We, we don't do no takeouts, so. We set, we, we set the, we set the table. You, hey, you remember the man who set the table and told the folks to come? And he went and said, to the highways and byways and asking to come. And if they didn't come, he goes to more people. It is good to laugh in the Lord. Amen. So if you, if you have any, um, any particular things you wanted to put into prayer, uh, tonight, go ahead and put those out. Uh, real quick. And so we can go ahead and, and get folks to bed and off the road and everything. So real quick, give us their petitions.
Miss Peggy Spain for healing. Mabel Singerton for healing. Frederick Gaskin for healing.
All right. Let's continue.
Arnold Spain for healing. For, um, pastors, um, and their wives and families, all our pastors for protection. Myers family for guidance, healing and, um, and, and strength, uh, only the Holy Spirit strength.
All right. Come on and bring those petitions. Amen. Someone else?
Healing and guidance.
Myself for healing, deliverance, peace, guidance. Therefore my kids, uh, deliverance, peace. My little girl with ADHD, OD, can't stay in school. I pray the Lord just do a whole three six now her so I can speak to them. She's small now. And, cause she real smart. I would, I want the Lord to just worship out.
Yes, um, me for healing and also for my extended family and friends.
Healing for the church body and, and everybody, uh, on call right now.
I would like to put, um, uh, Ms. Jean in the, uh, for prayer for continued healing. And as well as Annette for continued healing and, um, uh, transitioning back into the work, into working. And also for Ms. Margaret Timminway, um, she lost her nephew who lived with her. Uh, so just praying for her strength as well and for continued healing for her. Um, for Sister Vicky, uh, for continued healing. And also for Sister Gwen, who, um, had eye surgery last week. We pray for continued healing for her as well. Um, she's out and about, so we just praise God for that and pray for, um, everything to, for full recovery. Um, I also like to, uh, put our family in prayer. Uh, my brother lost his son um, a couple of weeks ago. So just pray for my family and my brother, um, and his wife and family as they mourn the loss of his, um, only son.
I, I did wanna ask, uh, um, for those who are dealing with loss, uh, for loved ones during this time as well. Also my, um, cousin Bob for healing, Bob Myers.
When Scott and I were, um, down in Conway doing art and stuff, um, we also had a chance to minister to several people and did portraits of people that had lost loved ones. So there is a lot of hurting people and a lot of, I just wanna lift up all those people that we were praying for. For their loved ones that they lost and their broken hearts.
To, uh, the people out in, uh, out there in North Carolina that, you know, there no power still in a lot of those places and in the mountains.
We'll pray, pray for restoration. Someone else?
I'd like to pray for those that are going on the cruise this weekend and, uh, pray for your, um, event this weekend, that it's, um, joyful and we make it back safe.
And pray for those families that had that school shooting. I don't know exactly what it was.
Yes. Amen. Okay. Let us pause in prayer. Oh heavenly Father, dear Lord, um, we just, first of all, we just praise your holy name. We just lift your name up high, dear God. You're Jehovah Jireh, dear God. Jehovah Nisi, dear God. You are Emmanuel with us, Lord. Dear Lord, did you thought no enough of us to send your son, uh, to come, dear Lord, uh, to look like us so that we can look more like you? We just, dear God, thank you for this Christmas season. We thank you for the Advent season, the anticipation, dear Lord. We just thank, with the same anticipation that Mary and Elizabeth had, dear God, that there were wonderful things inside of them for you. We have that same anticipation that there are wonderful things inside of us for you. And dear God, we just thank you. All those names we called out, all those situations we called out. We called them out, dear Lord, not because there's a question about it, but there's faith that we have that we know that you can do it, dear God. And dear Lord, we just thank you, dear God, that you can be everywhere, everywhere at once. And dear God, that you can send angels, dear God, and you can send your care team, of angels and, and you can. Uh, to folks. We've seen it in the Bible where you've seen folks where, uh, saying, send angels to say, fear not. And to tell folks that they do have favor. And dear God, we know that favor is available. Dear God, because you're the same God today as you were yesterday. And dear God, forevermore, we thank you, dear God, that there's healing in you. Dear God, we thank you that there's deliverance in you. We thank you, dear Lord, that we have the power of intercessory prayer. We thank you, dear God, for the selflessness of everybody on here. Who said, look, we wanna pray for me, but I want you to pray for everybody and pray for these situations. And so dear God, we understand, dear Lord, there's need. If we have a need, there's somebody else who has a need. So dear God, we thank you for those who denied themselves and wanted to pray for their neighbor, pray for their sons and pray for their daughters. And pray for those people though they don't even know, who are going through things, dear Lord, including the school shootings and the other things that people are going through right now. So we ask, dear Lord, um, for your anointing this bread, because dear God, you work things through us. Father, you, you work things through our hands. You told the, the, uh, the elders to join together and to lay hands on the inferno. We have that authority, dear God. We have the authority to lay hands. And dear God, we have the authority to actually speak things that are not as though they were. We just, so dear God, when there is not, there's chaos, we speak peace and understanding. We're learning it, dear Lord, not just to keep it to ourselves, but to also to pray, uh, for others to learn to be peaceful, to walk in peace, to walk in love. So we thank you, dear God, that we have the love of God with us and that we can share the peace of God, peace beyond understanding. So now, dear Lord, in, right now, in this time, dear God, that we have given, uh, there's been a gift that's been given to us. A wonderful counselor, a mighty God, yes, prince of peace. We thank you, dear God. That thank you for the relationship that we have. We thank you for the promises, the angelic promises, dear God, that's gonna be delivered, delivered, dear God. We thank you, dear Lord, for the presents we haven't even opened. And that, that means that the gifts, dear God, that you've given us, that have been blessed in us by the Holy Spirit. Dear God, even the fruit of the spirit. Father, we just thank you. Even the abilities, dear God, the, the, the councils that you've given us, given the church. Dear God, that we'll be able to have education, that we'll be able to have prophecy. Dear God, that we'll be able to have evangelism, that we were able to have teaching. Dear God, that we were able, dear God, to dream dreams, dear God, and interpret, dear God. We thank you, Father. Even the gift of tongues, dear God, and interpretation thereof. We believe in full five fold ministry, that there's nothing that you will hold back from us, dear God. Cause you want us to have what you want us to have. You've promised these things, dear God. And we are standing on the promises of God right now. And dear God, we plead the blood of Jesus. Dear God, dear Lord, can clear up all of our stains, dear God, and we can throw the sins that we've committed, which are many. Dear God, we admit, which are many, that can be thrown as far as the east is from the west. And dear God, we can be proclaimed righteous because of the faith that we have in you. So dear God, thank you, dear God. Well, we've been deemed righteous, just like Abraham was counted righteous just because he believed. We believe tonight. And we understand it's important to know our righteousness because the prayers of a righteous man avail as much. And so we understand that these prayers will not come back void and they will avail much. And dear God, you are able to do some surprise things. You are able to do exceedingly and abundantly above anything we can think or even imagine. So we can ask for one thing and you'll give ten. And we thank you, dear God. We can ask for blessing over our children and you'll give a blessing to our children, our neighbors' children and our children's children. And we thank you, dear God, that we can do manifold, we can get manifold blessings, dear God. Because we understand that's how you do it. You are a multiplier and we thank you, dear God. You are indeed three and one, Father, Father, Son and Holy Spirit. And we praise and worship you, dear God, not because of the things you do, but just for who you are. Now, dear God, now that we receive it, dear God, now that we receive these things, that the blessings are indeed already working and waiting on us, dear Lord, they that wait upon the Lord shall renew their strength. We'll mount on wings as eagles. And we thank you. Come on Isaiah, we thank you. And we thank you. We thank you, dear God, that we're mounting on wings, dear God, that we'll have strength, dear God. And we'll have the falckism of an eagle, that we can rise high above the fray and we can see. We thank you, dear God. To the one who can keep us from falling, to the wa- only, the wise God who has his son sitting on the right hand, dear God, and interpreting all these, these prayers. So they'll sound right to your ears. Dear God, we say thank you. We say thank you. And we bless your holy name. All right. It's good to see everybody, to have everybody on. Thank you for all your comments and thank you for your prayers. And if you can make it to one eighteen East Oliver Street on Saturday, we'd love to see you. Good night. Thank you again, brother Vince.
Thank you. Love y'all.
Thank you.